The next stakeholder, so the proposal is that we break for lunch now and we are trying to get the stakeholder two o'clock. We see if we can get them to come earlier and I think all of you will pick up when we are about to resume. But in the meantime, please go ahead and enjoy lunch. But in the meantime, please go ahead and enjoy lunch.
You gentlemen represent the South African Traders Association and the Chatsworth Centre, is that correct?
Yes.
I wonder if you wouldn't introduce yourselves and just give us some background to the South African Traders Association and the Chatsworth Centre and then we can proceed with submissions. You need to press that button right in the middle of the... to turn the microphone on, it will go red. And maybe whoever is going to start first. Thank you. But for the record, thanks, I can see here introduction and background. But nevertheless, I think we should just do it... you can do a summary of this and present it publicly. But thank you for the documents, it makes life much easier, I don't have to take any notes.
My name is Arthur Palliam, I am from Chatsworth Centre, I am the Chairperson of the Tenants Association.
Name again, Pallie. Yes, Arthur I have got.
Pallie.
Pallie.
No, Pallium.
Yeah.
P-A-L-L-I-A-M.
Palliam.
I am Anil Singh. I am from Chatsworth Centre, the Deputy Chair, and also the Advisor on SATA.
Good afternoon, my name is Dr Singh, I am the Chairman of the South African Trade Association.
Oh, ah, sorry. Finish. Devon Pallay, a member of SATA and tenant at Chatsworth Centre.
Good afternoon, my name is Levine Pallay, I am a consultant for SATA. And, okay, my colleague Arthur Palliam will start on behalf of Chatsworth Centre. But a little background on SATA, they are a South African Traders Association, which is a duly constituted and registered body representing a broad spectrum of small and medium enterprises in the retail sector.
Registered, registered in... we need to say registered, registering...
As a non-profit organisation.
Were you registered as a non-profit organisation?
NPC, were you a company?
NPL.
Just to get a sense of, is your membership national, how many members do you have? Give me just some sense of the... we are talking about the South African... you are introducing SATA, aren't you?
Yeah, the Chairperson of SATA will answer.
Okay.
Our membership is regional at the moment and we have around 60 members.
When you say regional, you mean Quasren Hotel?
Yes.
Hoping to grow. Chatsworth Centre will start with their presentations.
Maybe if you can just describe Chatsworth Centre for us as well.
Chatsworth Centre is 28 years old this year and we have... we used to have 170 tenants. And over a period of time, the tenants that were the smaller traders for which the centre was built was reduced. And there is national stores that are coming in now and the national stores are taking over smaller tenants. And the situation is that we are now sitting with 140 tenants. And unfortunately, in the past six months, it dropped to about 105 tenants due to a revamp and loss of trade. I am a tenant there for the past 25 years and there are certain issues that we are going through in that centre. After 28 years, they have invested... currently as we speak, they have just told us they are investing 140 million REN in the building and it was one of the best buildings that they ever had. And other buildings around us, namely the Pavilion, Galleria, Gateway, were the centres that was always being developed over every five-year period and we were ignored. And we just stayed stagnant continuously there. Unfortunately, our rental was increased between 8% to 10% per annum. And being a tenant, myself and others, for about 25 years, the rental was not levelled at a ceiling level whereby there is a fixed amount you come to and we continued paying a high rental. And the landlords would not listen to us, we had no voice, we had meetings and they basically listened to us and did nothing. And the sad thing is that there were a lot of them where told, "If you are not happy, leave." And it was the smaller traders from the area that built the centre to where it is today. And for the shareholders of Sanlam, this centre is a cash cow for them. And unfortunately, over the years, I think there were two of them that took their lives in the sense when they were forced to pay the rental and they couldn't face the situation they were placed in because they invested the entire blood, sweat and tears into the business. And we as small traders are being victimized now and we have been informed that if we are not happy in that building, we must leave. And the sad thing is that when you compare... we ask them about market-related rental. When you compare to rental across the road, that's like about 10 metres away from where we are in other buildings, the rental is far more cheaper. We know some landlords are charging 80 REN a square metre, whereas we are being charged 650 REN a square metre. And what we have observed recently, that over the years, we have established our business, we are safe in that area, but we are not secure in the sense of our livelihood. The reason being that what the landlord is doing is, they have gave us a new lease after every three years. And the worrying part is that the landlord came up with a new idea to charge us for common area of spaces that we don't use for electricity, for water, which means that if we have a 100-square-metre shop, we pay our own rental, we pay our rates, we pay our taxes on that, we pay the VAT. And more than that, if the landlord got a vacant space or a parking lot and all the electricity builds and water builds, even if there is wastage in the building, we are charged per square metre. And upon calculation, we have noticed that the square metre for common area is far more than what we use now shops. So we are faced with many situations, many problems. Right now, as we are sitting here, our centre, we were informed that the centre will be ready for... handed over to us as tenants after the revamp in late November. And after we had a meeting with the... And after we had a meeting with them, we're now being told somewhere in March. And the foot traffic has dropped in that centre to about 250,000 has dropped. So it's a cause of concern. We've been trying to have meetings and upon meetings, we haven't achieved much because we are a small voice there. And the problem is that we are just called one by one. They carry a situation whereby you divide to rule. So they call us one by one and they tell us no one's complaining, but everybody's complaining. And the management company that is doing the centre, working the centre now, I think they managed for the past 15 years, is JHI. And they seem to have a mafia style of operation whereby we are called to their office and we've been told what to do. And certain of us are being victimized in that area. And also, in this situation, we, as small traders, we've already set our business up. We already invested in the building, in our shops. And we cannot afford not to sign our lease when they throw in all these things to us. We are forced to sign the lease because... it's not that we don't... we are forced to sign it because we don't know where else to go. I mean, you invest 25 years of your life in the business and if you are going to be leaving that place, you're going to have nothing. And we know people living in the area that were forced to leave their shops and presently now they just got no business, they're sitting around. And we are bigger employers and better payers than some of the national stores that are employing staff in that area. So our concern is, how will you guys assist us? There's quite a few other issues here. We've got the usage liability clause whereby we are small traders, we are special stores, and then you get the national stores coming in. And the national stores sell anything and everything. So take for example, I'm in the photographic industry and I cannot afford to sell cameras because every cellphone has got a camera and it's got a good camera. Now, when I approach the landlords to tell them, listen, I need to sell cellphones because they've got a camera. It says, no, it's not in your lease. But they've got everybody else selling it. I mean, you've got all the national stores, Fushini, Markham's, Maladies, you've got MTN, Veracom, all the brand names, they're selling these things here. And I haven't sold a camera in my shop for the past 10 years. So these are causes of concern. And we also... I inform that if we're not happy with what's going on, we can leave. And as we speak now, there were certain tenants who asked to leave and they're extending their stores to accommodate national stores who pay a lower rental per square metre. So basically, what's happening is us, small tenants, are carrying the national stores. And also, when we apply for a store, we have noticed that the smaller tenants have to apply... when they have a letter of intent to lease and when we sign our lease documents, we are requested to have three months' rental upfront. And for us to do that, it becomes impossible to be in business because three months' rental is a lot of money in one go. That is, before you even start business. So that is also difficult for us. And it is the smaller stores that built up the centre to where it is today. That's my main concern, is how does the landlord justify per square metre in a market-related area regarding our rental charges? And the new tenants are now being charged rates, common area, water and lights.
Municipal charges.
And also all municipal charges, refuse charges, sewer charges. And the concern is, the landlord is not paying for any single thing, even if there's a problem in the building and the higher the private electricians are coming, the tenants are paying for this. When there is a break in the pipework, in the water meters or the pipes that... recently there was a break in the pipe and we lost water over a three-day period. And the tenants are the ones that are paying for it because the landlord don't come and say, here's a rebate, the insurance company has covered this cost and it comes out of your rental. There's no such thing. And the other thing is that we believe that JHI is requested by the landlord, by the owners of the building, which is Sanlam, to pay rental on the 15th of every month. But the managing company is asking us to pay on the 1st of every month. Now, our concern is, if we are paying on the 1st and the landlord gets the money on the 15th, what happens to the money between the 1st and the 15th, which means that the management company is investing that money in a bank account and earning interest on our money? So how do we, as businessmen, who are smaller guys, survive in this economical climate?
Our rent is paid in 30 days in advance.
Yes.
And we pay interest on it. We pay on its first, second.
That's true. Our rental is paid 30 days in advance of the request of the landlord. So which means that that money is put into account and there's earnings on that. And if you're looking at our rentals in the centre, it's a couple of millions.
And we pay interest, we pay second, third, fourth.
Okay. Yeah, the other sad thing is that if you don't pay on the 1st, we all pay interest on the money that's outstanding. And of recent, we just received a letter from our managing company that they will not be giving us invoices. We have to go through our emails. And the sad thing is that we've got old people in our centre who's got businesses, operate from a cart as well, and they don't have emails. They don't have the access to a computer. And I believe, as a consumer, we are entitled to a hard copy of our invoice so that we can go to the bank and pay our rent. There's a letter right here in my presence. So these are the issues we're going through on a daily basis. It's a major concern for all of us. Thank you.
Can I just add something to it? This property was bought for... sold to Sanlam in apartheid era. It was sold for 69 million at the stage. It was taken away from the House of Delegates. The community got no shares from it. And the rental there at the time was supposed to be 29 rands a square metre. That didn't happen. In other words, in five years, Sanlam got the money back. We say they collect it in about 15 million a month there on rental, which, not a cent, is paid by Sanlam for anything. They don't give back anything to the community beside...
The Berthry Award.
The Berthry Award for 25,000.
Past three years.
And when you talk about market-related, we cannot talk about the other centres. We'll talk about what's happening in our centre. Our centre, the major stores are paying anything from 80 rand a square metre. And the smaller tenants are paying anything up to 900 rand a square metre. And I had a meeting with Sanlam last week and asked him, how can you justify a rental like that? When someone is paying 80 rand a square metre, my lease is coming for renewal and my neighbour is paying 200, tell me which is market-related now. How much should I pay? He couldn't answer me. This is what market-related is in your own building, it should be. So we are treated very badly. And what makes it more worse now is no young business person can come into that centre because of what the demands are in the mall. So no, what the government is talking about now is they can never do anything about it until they put the malls right. And marketing funds we pay. To market their centre, we have to pay funds. And I think rates should be paid by the landlord, not by the tenants. They own the property. And the measurements of the stores, they take in even the walls that they measure, yet it's supposed to be a floor area. Like, I've got a problem with them. My shop, they gave me a 90.9 square metres. The new lease is reading 105 square metres. When I got someone to measure it, it's 78 square metres. So we're standing on a dispute now there. So how many more tenants are paying so much more for nothing who don't understand these What we demand is here, I think you should do is, we should get sectional titles, the small business people, on these major stores. And 40% should go to the community for the upkeep. We've got people starving in the area, no food. That's all I have to say.
Very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. This is the introduction and background, right? We, SATA, South African Traders Association, a duly authorized and registered body representing broad spectrum of small and medium enterprises in the retail sector, welcomes the opportunity to make the submission to the Competition Commission. We're making the submission in respect of the impact, negative and positive effects of the entry of national supermarket chains into townships, peri-urban areas, rural areas and the informal economy by the loose formation of, and this is our allegation, cartels in the retail property sector and the impact of long-term exclusive leases and their subsequent impact on competition in the retail space. Small and medium enterprises, SMEs, are the backbone of any emerging economy. SMEs are directly and indirectly responsible for the majority of employment in RSA. In the past, SMEs were separate, different entities that took root in the townships, semi-urban, peri-urban and rural areas. Malls and shopping centres were created with pomp and pizzazz to lure the consumers, thus restricting business from the SMEs and informal traders. The SMEs and informal traders, in order to survive, were forced to follow the consumers into the malls and shopping centres and were initially granted favourable terms to trade. To illustrate how this situation has progressed, right? In the 1960s, in the height of apartheid, there were only approximately 100,000 square metres of institutionalised shopping centres. And these were largely in previously advantaged areas. Township and rural centres have increased to almost 300, while the number of centres larger than 30,000 square metres has increased from 36 in 1994 to 160 currently. Today, there is over 23 million square metres of institutionalised shopping centres in RSA. And RSA has the sixth highest number of shopping centres in the world, despite having a population of approximately 50 million people and is not placed in the top 20 economies in the world. The super and large retailers, most of which are JSC-listed companies, super franchises and national retailers, occupy between 80% and 90% of the floor space in these centres. Now, first submission is that loose cartels have formed. We submit and wish to highlight that such as submissions are mainly on the loose formation of cartels in the retail property sector that has a direct bearing on the retail sector. The Big Five of all mutual properties, Sanlam Properties, Liberty Properties, Vugile Properties, Redefined Properties, all JSC-listed companies, own between 80% to 90% of the prime retail property in RSA. The parent companies, which are also JSC-listed, of the so-called Big Five property companies, all have shares and investments in the retail giants like Pick 'n Pay, Checkers, Spar, Massmart, Woolworths, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. The lists are numerous and there is the interesting phenomenon of cross-shareholding. The super-management company, JHI, manage all mutual properties, Sanlam Properties, Liberty Properties and Vugile Properties. Redefined Properties manages its own properties. It is therefore submission, our submission, that loose cartels have been formed. These cartels have access to virtually unlimited capital for controlling supply. This is therefore not a free-market economy and anti-competitive behaviour. Off the top, okay, now, you'd say, in argument against that, public are allowed to have shares in these JSC-listed companies. Historically disadvantaged investors own only 23% in the top 100 companies and less than 10% in JSC overall. White SA shareholding represents 45%, with foreigners 31% and the state 1% owning the rest. Most alarming of these statistics is the foreign ownership of shares, which is on the increase in relation to, well, all South African-owned shares. The holdings of historically disadvantaged South Africans, that is, all African-coloured and Indian residents, according to the Department of Trade and Industry, in JSC companies, have grown significantly over the past decade. However, the topic of black shareholding on the JSC is currently being hotly debated with divergent opinions on the real state of affairs. Some senior government officials like Mr. Manu, President of the Black Management Forum and former Director General of the Department of Labour, estimate the figure to be as low as 5%. Right. Now, cartels. There's no definition of cartels, but the Competition Act refers to restrictive horizontal practices which are prohibited. That is, an agreement between or concerted practice by firms or a decision by an association of firms is prohibited if it is between parties in a horizontal relationship and if it has the effect of substantially preventing or lessening competition in a market unless a party of the agreement, concerted practice or decision can prove that any technological efficiency or other pro-competitive gain resulting from it outweighs that effect. Submission, when it comes to the retail sector that we are talking about, there's no technological It involves any of the following restrictive horizontal practices: directly or indirectly fixing a purchase or selling price or any other trading condition. As we've heard from our colleague over here, the super-retailers, by the way, let's get back to this, the super-retailers that are in effect owned by the property owners get low rates in terms of their leases, right? So in any event, that's... so there is price fixing, dividing markets by allocating customers, suppliers, territories or specific types of goods. When you consider that 80% of these malls, the space is given to these super-retailers, that's... that's, you know, allocating customers, territories, et cetera. Okay. So that's, that's one aspect. The next part, which falls, well, which is under the ambit, is the duration of leases. Long-term leases granted to the large retailers is an important factor. However, it is our submission that the duration of the leases cannot be taken in isolation. All the cartels, through their respective managing agents, which includes the super-managing agent JHI, own, manage, and control the land, the buildings, the allocation of leases, duration of lease, escalation rates, deposits, restriction of usage, the allocation of positioning of floor space, the length of the lease, and determine and dictate the user clause, and finally, perhaps unlawfully, profit from rates and taxes. These major retailers, who are part and parcel of the cartels, use their shareholding in the various companies to increase their footprint and stranglehold of the formal retail sector. These monopolies result in extortionate rentals which are passed on to the customers. Cannibalizing SMEs thus affects the township semi-urban, peri-urban, and rural areas negatively in that it destroys competition. SMEs, unemployment, and increases inflation destroyed with it, causing the Gini coefficient. I'm told that that's the separation between poor and rich. Duration of lease, yeah, the first point, duration of lease. Super-retailers are given long lease periods from five to twenty-year leases, while SMEs are given three-year leases. Super-retailers are given beneficial occupation rates, and in some cases, super-retailers are also given tenants' installation to set up their stores, and this ranges from one hundred thousand rand to millions of rands. Super-retailers are given low escalations, which range from as low as one percent to consumer price index. The duration of the lease and low escalation rates have a compound effect. The SMEs' escalations start from eight percent and go up to twelve percent, maybe more. This creates a compounded negative effect on SMEs. Super-retailers are not affected by deal creep. Deal creep is where SME's contracts comes up for renewal. The landlord changes conditions unilaterally. An example is when the landlord wants to suddenly change a charge for common area water and electricity when it was not charged previously, but the new conditions do not affect the super-retailers as they have longer-term leases. The rates of operating costs in advertising has got a lower rate of inflation attached due to the low rate of escalation and also due to the long period of the lease in favor of the super-retailers. The landlord can readjust SME's, okay, sorry, just back to the deal creep part. When you're on the ten percent, when you look at the ten percent escalation and the rental, the landlord, in effect, becomes a shareholder in the SME as well because he's taking a
A turnover clause.
A turnover. Yeah, there is a turnover clause.
Sorry, just to give clarity to that, there's a turnover clause that's inserted into the lease agreements which give effect, which effectively gives the landlord a percentage in your business. Basically, he gets ten percent of your turnover or whichever is greater, the turnover or the rental amount, which is grossly unfair to the SME.
The landlord can readjust SME's rentals after every expiry, which is generally three years, to above-market-related rentals, which compensates for the low rentals given to the super-retailers. The SMEs are not given options to renew their leases and must reapply after the expiry of the lease, which is not a condition that applies to the super-retailer. The access to capital to finance equipment and ongoing operations is difficult to virtually impossible given the short-term lease. Financiers are allowed to lend an SME money with the risk of the business ending in three years. I'm going to come back to the other part which I spoke about earlier, floor space. Our understanding of the mandate and function of the commission, as contained on the commission's homepage of the commission's website, is to promote and maintain competition in South Africa in order to promote the efficiency, adaptability, and development of the economy, to provide consumers with competitive prices and product choices, promote employment and advance the social and economic welfare of South Africans, expand opportunities for South African participation in world markets and recognize the role of foreign competition in the republic, ensure that small and medium-sized enterprises have an equitable opportunity to participate in the economy, and promote a greater spread of ownership, in particular, to increase the ownership stakes of historically disadvantaged persons. The last two points, it is our submission that the ownership, on the last two points, it is our submission that the ownership of the shopping centers by the JSC-listed parent companies that also have shares in the super-retailers and own the floor space taken up by the major retailers alone is contrary to most of those clauses above, but especially the last two mentioned. We also respectfully refer this commission to the commission's own submissions and definitions and interpretations of dominance and market power as contained in the Competition Act. There is therefore no wrangling or argument that the super-retailers, who are all part of these loose cartels, are dominant in shopping centers. Structure of the lease. Super-retailers are given free-to-low base rentals per square meter on inception. Example, Woolworths in Gateway and four lengthy periods. This fact, coupled with the low rate of escalation for super-retailers, which range from as low as one percent to consumer price index, results in a slanted rental in favor of the super-retailers. Relocation and non-renewals. The landlord can relocate you and/or cancel your lease with short notice for revamps and renovations, which are decided upon unilaterally, resulting in added relocation and marketing costs and loss of revenue, which can result in closures. Also, more often than not, SMEs are relocated to make way for super-retailers. The landlords determine when and where revamps will be occasioned, and when these revamps are carried out and certain entrances are blocked, which has an impact on foot traffic and ultimately turnover, the landlord is not willing to negotiate low rentals for the time of renovations. Bullying within the industry in the form of cancellation of leases and/or non-renewal of leases, the majority of SMEs are of the opinion that the problems are caused by the management agencies, which from time to time would not allow renewal of leases in order to force the SMEs into higher rates of lease. Further, managing agents favor other super-retailers, who are always given first preference by management agencies. The majority of SMEs are concerned that in the absence of regulation, if the trend continues, SMEs would potentially lose their livelihood to the larger retailers. Liability or non-liability clauses. A liability clause is inserted in SME's leases when the landlord, where the landlord is protected and exempt from any and all damage caused by landlord or agent's negligence. Short-term insurance companies, who are generally JSC-listed and part of these cartels, refuse to insure the SMEs because of the liability slash non-liability clause. Restriction of usage surfaces, my colleague gave an example of the camera. I think I use it here as well. The super-retailers are given broad unrestricted user and service clauses. Like, for example, you'll have an SME bakery in the building, and then the super-retailer has its own bakery as well, allowing them to sell any commodity whilst the SMEs are given restrictive clauses which prohibit the growth of their business. An example is that a bakery owned by an SME cannot bake and retail the government loaf bread baked in the bakery because of the super-retailers. Further, all super-retailers may sell and market cellphone contracts, but most SMEs are prevented from this practice. I mean, what, what has the selling of contracts got to do with selling bread, vegetables, can of beans, you know? A natural trend of the current market is that changes occur rapidly, and the restrictive clauses prohibit SMEs from evolving their business and remaining relevant to the consumer, which will ensure longevity. An example is the rapid advances and changes in the photographic industry, where there is the extinction of film and virtually every device may be used as a camera, but the restrictive clauses prohibit SMEs to sell the outdated, to just the sale of the outdated cameras. On rare occasions, remedies in respect of the restrictive clauses occur only on renewal of the lease, which is often too late as the consumer is driven to the super-retailer. Profiteering on rates and taxes. A common practice among the landlords and/or their managing agents is to reevaluate the property values and term this director's evaluation and make a profit on the difference between the municipal evaluation and the director's evaluation. SMEs require the commission to investigate whether this practice of profiteering of government rates and taxes is legal and whether it is applied to the cartels or whether only applied in respect of SMEs. Deposits. The cartels through their managing agents require SMEs to provide deposits of between one and a half months to three months, which are retained in accounts controlled by the managing agents while not requiring deposits of the super-retailers. The retention of deposits by the managing agents is used to further increase their profits while the SMEs get unfavorable rates of interest. In summary, in conclusion, we support this commission's investigations here in fully and fully believe and recommend that the commission's scope of investigation be expanded to include all cartel practices among JSC-listed companies, who are the landlords, and the henchmen, the managing agents, and the super-retailers, which are in fact largely owned by the landlords themselves. Our recommendations are that if cartel behavior and anti-competitive behavior is proven, not to fine the players, but to force the guilty parties, namely the landlords, to relinquish the land ownership to the SMEs and equitably redistribute the land and property. If you fine these guys, they give it back to the consumer by increasing prices or retrenching jobs, right? And what happens with those fines? How does it come back to the SMEs? There's got to be a redistribution in respect of the ownership of those properties. We request standardized rentals, rates, and duration of leases. As stated previously, the cartels' self-regulation by way of contracts of lease have cannibalized the SMEs, which results in only a success rate of five percent of emerging entrepreneurs from the historically disadvantaged backgrounds, ultimately causing unemployment on an unprecedented scale. JSC-listed companies do not care about employment, and in South Africa, employment is a huge issue. In short, the SMEs are utilized to build and support the centers until their usefulness is no longer required and they are discarded. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, my colleague. Just, I just want to add something on to these things, two point one four. In some cases, these are not even charged, like the municipal rates, although we have requested for the total amount, like the bill coming from the municipalities. We don't ever see them, and they want us to part-pay that. We don't see that bill, and I think we are being overcharged. That is two point one four. And two point one six, if we have a lease for three years and our equipment has a sixty-month lease or a motor vehicle, how do we pay for that? So that, that's a problem with SMEs. Then, okay, now, liability. Two point six one, the major stores all have an open-end lease that they can sell about anything, from a screw to maybe an airplane, but not us. Then you've got, there's another one on phase. Two point five, liability, where's the one on the fair? Two point two, foreign traders. We have foreign traders coming out here right throughout the year. They go like nomads, putting up big marquees in the cricket pitch at the soccer stadium, selling produce long way cheaper than us. They're using homes, buying of homes, trading from there. And we, SMEs, can't compete with these people because they make very little profit on the goods. They take the money out of this country where our rand is, our rand is fifteen rand, say, today for us. To them, our rand is worth six rupees. So to them, it's a lot of money. So we just can't compete with them. If they make ten rand, for them it's sixty rands. And I think, Rex, you can go on this more on the fair, how harming the business practice.
Yeah, the issue we have with foreign traders coming is that they flout most of our South African tax laws. They avoid the customs duty. They are not registered companies, so most of them don't pay any income tax or VAT. They basically use the infrastructure developed in South Africa, paid for by us, to basically fleece the consumer. They sell oftentimes subpar items, and they also flout the Consumer Protection Act because they are only here for roughly a month, and they they are only here for roughly a month, and they, and they pack up and they leave without paying any duty, without giving any guarantees or assurances to the, to the South African consumers. And we've been raising this issue time and time and again with authorities, but we haven't really had much success.
I just want to add to that, please. What we, what we discussed right now with this issue here has been discussed over a, over a four-year period. What had happened was, the municipality, the municipality has allowed foreigners coming to this country, pitch up tents, have an exhibition, and have a sale. And the worrying factor is that the money that's earned out of here is not spent in this country, it's taken out of the country by foreigners. And our major concern is, I personally feel, the municipality is guilty of this, they are allowing this to happen. If they restrict this from happening, this would not happen, and it will protect all our local businessmen who pay their taxes, who pay their vets, and who pay the necessary levis. And we are the ones that employ people on a longer period of time. These guys come here for a month, they set up shop, they do business, and they're gone. And then this, people now get unemployed again, and it's a tussle continuously. And this is, we cannot control this, it's a municipality's duty, in my opinion, where the municipality can come in across and deny all these things happening. And this is happening in all the provinces, and these guys are coming in with inferior products. We've seen it, we've bought it, we experienced it. And you cannot get back any returns on these things because these guys are all gone. And then in the next three months, there's a new group coming, and it continues on an ongoing basis. And this is where we personally feel is the responsibility of our Tiqueni Council should deny them this opportunity so that we protect it in this area. And they will take a certain commodity and will abuse the sale of it. So this is also very important, and personally, I think, is any particular person or somebody in the council can do this for us.
In the last 10 years, they've taken out about 10 billion illegally from the country.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, do you, do you have any questions?
Certainly do.
Okay, and just one point of clarity, on that point in 2.16, finances are low to 10, to lend any SMEs money with the risk of business ending in three years with no option to renew, right? There's no options to renew on clauses. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Just in respect to that last statement, that over the last 10 years, 10 billion has been taken out of the country, where, where do you get, where do you get that from?
We've quantified it from a report that appeared in the Indian paper. I don't have the details right now, but I could make that available to you.
You've mentioned the original number of tenants, was it 128 or 188? I wasn't able to get that number.
Sorry, 170, 170.
So there were 170 tenants?
Yes.
Okay. And at this time, when you say SME, SMEs or small traders actually built that center, how far back in years, you said 28 years, like how?
That's right, 28 years that center is in existence.
And, so at the, at the inception of the center, it was only occupied by small traders or small and independent?
Originally, there was an anchor tenant, which is checkers, and there were other smaller, I mean, there were other national stores that came in as a brand name. But originally, they didn't want to come in.
They didn't want to come into the area.
And then five years later, they start coming to the centers.
And can I just add to that? They've taken out now to put SPA there, they've taken out 11 smaller stores owners who are paying rent from 200 to somewhere 900 rand a square meter and gave it to SPA for 105 rand a square meter. We're saying, why can't they give it to us?
Okay, you, you, okay, I'll get to that point. From 170, your tenants, the tenants went down to 140, and then from 140?
To 105.
You're now 105.
Yes.
And, and this drop has been due to all the things that you have listed to us?
Exactly.
Not just one factor?
No, to all these factors that concerns, that we discussed.
And then you also mentioned that there was an anchor tenant from the, from the beginning?
Yes, inception.
And this was shop right?
That's right.
Okay. And then when did SPA come in, five years ago?
No, no, SPA is being developed right now as we speak, so they will open at the end of August as from what we know.
So when you say traders have been taken out in order to make?
Is he, what had happened was?
To make room for SPA?
Yes.
Can you explain to us what happened to the, to the, to the leases of these traders? What happened to the businesses of these traders?
Okay.
In order for them to make way for SPA to operate?
Okay, this is what happened. Initially, we had about 15 tenants in there.
In that, in that area.
In that building, in that area. And the landlords applied to extend the area, to bring in, to bring in SPA.
Yes.
So what had happened was, they saw the need to displace the other tenants, and they have offered them space in the center, and some of them were asked to leave the center. Those that were offered space in the center was when the tenants association got involved and fought the land management and told them, this is not fair, it's not acceptable, you cannot take people out who have already settled themselves in. So what had happened was, the management company applied and they got the, with the hands of the landlord, they got the approval of this, of the SPA to open. And to get the SPA involved into that building, they had to displace this 15-odd tenants. And by displacing them, most of them had to leave because there was no space, because the other places were booked and taken. And there were one or two spaces that were available, which the others accepted and moved.
Well, the displacement, did it occur in the form of written letters where you've been told?
Yes, they were given written letters.
We have copies of those letters for us, please.
We can get it for you, ma'am.
And all they affected, all 15 traders that were affected?
We can locate them for you, and also on our lease agreement, it says there that we as, well, we the smaller traders, says that they had every right to remove us whenever there's a need, an extension, even we, if, if a truck goes into our building where our shop is and damaged our equipment, they're not liable for anything during renovations. So we have to carry the cost, and our insurance companies will refuse. On the 15th of May, I had a problem at my shop, there was a water leakage because of the gutters, and a whole lot of rain came into the shop, my equipment got damaged, electronic stuff, and my stock got damaged, and the landlord says to us, we have to go back to our insurance company. Our insurance company is sending back to us, saying that's not their responsibility, they don't maintain the building. So we in a catch-22.
Our leases are totally one-sided to the landlord's side, nothing is leeway, nothing is balanced on the lease, if you get a copy of it. And if you get the major store leases, it's completely different. They won't get, I can give you a copy of our lease, but the major store lease, you need to look at it too, too. If you can give it to us, we can tell you what's wrong there, and you all have it.
Okay, can I just ask you, the displacement, how, how does, how does that take place legally?
This is what happened was, we, it, the 15 tenants that were there initially were given letters that they will have to move. And upon that letter, they were informed that they have a certain time period, and they gave them I think about three months to move out. Initially, what had happened was, there was a plan in place, and the council denied this plan, an extension, and that's when these people were moved.
I mean, game supposed to come in.
And that was the time when game supposed to come into the building, and game refused to come because they had a two-year plan, and the management company couldn't fulfill that space. So that building was vacant for about six or eight months until they renegotiated with SPA to come in. And in that time, these people, who are smaller traders, lost the space.
And what, what is more unfair is there, when these tenants were moved out, they were not given any monetary compensation on that. And yet, when they bring in SPA there, I don't know what the figure is standing at, about 22 million, I think, that Sanlam is giving them. I'm not sure, that was supposed to be for game, I don't know how much game has got. And when they moved jets from there, I think they must have got about 8 to 11 million. So that's how it is working there.
You are Mr. Singh?
Yeah.
Mr. Singh, how, how do you know that SPA was given 22 million?
I know how much game was being given.
Okay.
Right? So SPA must be getting the same amount.
Okay. So you're assuming SPA must have been given?
That.
Okay.
This was told to us in a meeting with Sanlam. Remember? Gateway.
And are there minutes to these meetings, or was there?
They won't give you that minutes.
Okay.
Sorry, who keeps the minutes?
Are there minutes taken of, of these meetings? Let's just put it that way.
The one held in Gateway.
No.
No, no, didn't take minutes.
Now, the question I want to ask, you might not have taken minutes, they might not have given you minutes, the question is, did they keep minutes?
We don't know.
You don't know?
No, it's easy to find out, if you go into the books, you'll see it, how much they're giving to them, very easy in accounting.
But in most malls, what happens is, when they need a brand name into the center, they do give them a TI, tenant installation whereby they offer them a certain amount of money, and then they do the fittings. Because we are aware of a fact that the SPUR restaurant was across the road, and they wanted that brand to come into the center, and they outlaid certain amount of money.
1 million in the case, Paul.
They outlaid certain amount of money for them to come in to do the installation.
Okay.
And they were given, I think, a month to do that at no extra charge. But when we signed the lease, we're not even given a week or even two days leeway to set our shops up.
The question that arises from this is, these amounts, these tenant installations, are they then fed back to the SMEs and charged in their escalations, which would create the uncompetitive, anti-competitive behavior?
So you're concerned about the advantage that the new, the bigger retailers tend to have. You, you refer to them as super retailers, who are we talking about? Can you mention who they are, the super retailers that you mentioned?
Pick and pay.
Can you, that are in the center, that you are concerned?
All the centers.
Most of the centers.
Most of the centers, you have.
Not of just the centers.
Well, most centers, you have your major retailers, which are your pick and pays, either your pick and pays, your SPAs, your Massmart.
Mr. Pillay, let's focus on Chatsworth Center, which is the center that you are, you are reporting.
I'll assist you with that. The super retailers he's talking about will be the Shoprite, the Miladies, the Markems, the Fushini, the Edgars.
Woolworths.
Woolworths.
Okay.
And now we've got the SPA coming in.
So there's the Woolworths as well in this?
Yes. And what had happened with the Woolworths?
When did Woolworths come in?
They had the, from the, from, from?
About 22 years nowadays.
Yeah, about 22 to 24 years, I would think.
Okay.
Yes. So these are the, the retailers that are there now. And the other thing is that when they require space, they try and get them the space. Because what had happened was, Woolworths first came in without foods, and they only came with clothing, and then they realized that the foods can help them to increase the turnovers, and they introduced foods.
Okay.
This building is called the White Pearl of Sanlam.
The what?
White Pearl of Sanlam.
White Pearl.
Meaning the most profitable in the country.
For Sanlam.
For Sanlam. But now it's becoming the white elephant, I told them, the way they don't look after it and maintain it.
You, you also mentioned that your rentals, the small traders, no, no, you said the rents across the road are 80 rand per square meter, whereas in the center, you pay 600 rand per square meter.
It's, it's 180 rand, between 180 rand to 250, 250 rand per square meter.
Elsewhere.
Across the road.
Across the road.
And other buildings owned by other landlords.
No, 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 the rental in our center is 80 rand a square meter to the major stores, in our store, in our center. So it's unfair practice.
So the rentals charged to the bigger retailers is 80 rand per square meter?
Per square meter, and some of our tenants are paying right up to 900 rand, small tenants. And if you don't like it, you walk, you must go.
Mm-hmm. And then you, you said every three years you required not to, it's not, you don't have a renewal clause?
No option clause.
Every year you're required to?
Every three years.
Apply.
To, you, you apply to, to actually set up your business again and apply to enlist in this one. And, and, and this affects you getting funding, and it also affects the kind of terms you have with the landlord.
And they want to up, they want us to upgrade the shop, put new shop fittings and things like that. And to fit a shop out, like a clothing shop, is something like 500, 600,000.
Okay.
In three years, you can never recoup.
Can I ask then, with the parties that, with the small traders that have operated there from the beginning, let's say in the, for the past 28 years, for example, are you telling us that there are small traders that have been operating in the center and for the 28 years they have been in the center, every third year or every fourth year?
Yes, I, I am a victim of that.
They have to apply?
Yes, I am a victim.
Yes.
To what the rent you started with.
Okay, so, and you have, and you can provide us with evidence of these tenants, and they are, would you have leases, copies of their leases?
Previous leases, yes, we'll inquire, we'll get them for you.
That go back, that far, that kind of show this conduct?
Definitely.
I'm sure that there's bank statements that will track what the lease was at the beginning?
Yes.
And what it is now.
There should be a ceiling level set on rentals. I mean, for 28 years, you keep paying 8% escalation, 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 there's no end to it. Our profit don't move, the goods prices go up, but our profit is down.
Why are you not able to consider other properties in the area? Are there no other properties in Chatsworth?
If the government give us a land?
Okay.
It's fine. We had made an offer to buy this Chatsworth Center to tenants, they refused us. And Phoenix One Two, we also made an offer to purchase that as tenants, but they sold it to the sister company, Vukila. And the Chatsworth Center, they wanted 728 million when we asked them to buy it, and we were ready to buy it. And they came back and said, no, it's not for sale. I've got it that in writing.
And then, and the upfront payment on rentals, is that applicable to both small traders and big retailers? Do you know if this practice is a, is a?
When you mean upfront, is it a deposit or the rental payment?
Yeah, the, the three months, you, you, there was a mention of a three-month rental upfront.
The biggest stores are not charged deposits.
They are given?
How do you know they're not? Because they enter into leases that would be confidential, I just want to know.
There's a lot of things we learn from everyone.
Installation, they are given money for their installations, they are not required to deposit.
And, and they're given free trading time for so many months.
Okay.
We're not given?
When you say free trading time, like where they don't pay rent?
Rent for so many months.
And they can just operate a store without paying rent?
Yeah, they can just kill us, small business.
Okay.
Just to clarify on the escalation, you know, the smaller retailers are asked to grow their business by 10, 8 to 10. you know, the smaller retailers are asked to grow their business by ten, eight to ten, sometimes twelve percent on the escalation, on year-on-year. And the economy is not even growing at five percent, or not even at one percent. Now, how can a small retailer grow his business or his turnover by ten to twelve percent per annum? When the, you know, when the economy is not even growing at that rate? You know, it becomes unsustainable over the period.
The issue is the anti-competitive behaviour, right? How can... The guys who can afford it, right? Let's say, Shoprite Checkers pay eighty rand per square metre. And then, the SME pay six hundred to nine hundred rand a square metre for actually inferior quality space, right? And that, that's where it all starts.
And they can sell just about anything.
Eighty rand for Checkers, six hundred rand for a photo studio.
You also...
Oh, and Checkers probably also has a photo thingy.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. What's more important is, they can sublet their shops.
Yes.
We cannot do that. They, in fact, they get rentals from the sublet. Like, if you walk into Edgar's, all those perfume and all those people, they are sublet there. So, they, they might be sublinging three hundred rand, making a profit.
No profit, yeah.
Exactly.
So, they win all over.
And you said you will provide us with copies of your leases?
Yes, we will.
Well, I bet you, if you can subpoena them from there, you'll get everything out from them.
Okay, thank you.
They might not just give us.
And the issue of our allegation regarding cartels?
I wanted to go to that, when you say loose cartel, your concept of a loose cartel, is it based on the fact that some of the property owners are listed JSE entities, shareholders in this, in the big retailers? And is that where this is?
Yes.
Is that where your loose cartel?
There's three, there's three parties over here.
Yeah.
The owners of the property.
Yes.
The owners of the property, like Sanlam Properties, are owned by Sanlam. Sanlam has shares in most of these super retailers.
Sure.
Right? O-Mutual Properties, owned by O-Mutual. Other divisions of O-Mutual own shares in... It's all one big happy JSE family.
Relating agents.
Yeah, and then, the way they deflect attention from themselves is that there's the managing agents that are appointed, and the super managing agent that's probably, that manages most properties for everybody is JHI. Right? So...
Are you saying they're the biggest property manager by far, in your knowledge?
Of prime retail space.
Sorry?
Of prime retail space.
Of prime retail space, sure.
Even, even that is kind of like kept away from SMEs.
Okay. So, and then, you also mentioned that with the three, with every three years of your lease renewal, you, obviously, your lease has to go up, and then, is this what you refer to as your deal creep?
Yes, basically, with deal creep, what happens is that, let's say, what has happened now is that the smaller SMEs are now being charged for common area water, common area electricity. So, basically, the tariff fee in the mall, which is your walkways, which is owned by and occupied by the landlord to benefit his profits, is now passed on to the SMEs. And that never used to happen. You know, when the centres first started, we weren't charged those rates. You know, and it started off with a simple thing, like refuse. You used to be given refuse packets, and then that stopped. And it, it's slow, that's how the deal creep happens, you know. It's one thing after the other, and every escalation, there's something new that they're charging you for. And before you know it, your incidental charges are just as much as your base rental.
What is very interesting more is, they have South African Property Association.
Yes.
The members are these JHI, all these property people. And then, they've got the SA Malls Association, it's the very same people. But they haven't got a tenants association who can speak for the tenants.
To add, just to add on to my colleague's comment, is that, you know, we're not allowed to negotiate on a broad scale. If we go up as a collective to negotiate our leases, we're told that we've signed contracts on an individual basis, and they can only negotiate with us on a one-on-one. And in that process, you're told, you either want your store, or you don't want your store. If you don't want it, you can leave.
Okay. There was an example that Devin Pille made, made an example of the government loaf and the bakery. Can you go back to that point where you said the restrictions within the lease, within the lease, and what you can do, what you cannot do? And in relation to that government loaf, can you explain what happens there?
What will happen is, you have a bakery, it is given, it is given a lease, it's a small...
A small trader.
It's an SME, small trader, right?
Yes.
And they are restricted from selling anything that, I'll take the super retailer, let's say, for example, Checkers, SPAR, et cetera, sell. So, a bakery that is supposed to bake bread cannot make that and sell it in the centre, whereas Checkers may.
So, what does the bakery, what is the bakery supposed to bake then?
That question is to the landlord. You know, we, they just basically...
They sell cakes and this and...
Okay, so, you provide us with all these leases that have these restrictions? Even this, the fact that you cannot bake bread, and yet you are a bakery?
Yes.
And is this, is this a bakery that started, that was there from the beginning? Or is this another deal creep situation?
No, it's bakery that was here from the beginning.
Okay. Okay, thank you, thank you very much.
I know that you don't have the leases, but is the shared space, refuse and water, electricity, are those charges imposed on, on the main retailers? Or is it purely, as far as you know?
Well, you know, let's take, for example, your Shoprites. Their leases are twenty years, and that was signed probably ten years ago, or with their options, or whatever the case may be. And at that time, they weren't charging common area water and electricity. So, they've got to wait for this expiry date of their lease agreement before they start charging there.
The second thing is, your trade association. So, while some of your members are in the Chatsworth Centre, and so, you've given us very detailed information in respect of the Chatsworth Centre, your members, however, are wider than Chatsworth Centre. And that's, when you speak then about the, about these practices, you've given us a specific example, and then, what you're saying is that your other members are experiencing the same difficulties in other malls?
All similar, all parallel, yes.
Can you then, in respect of your membership, then, pick out just different malls and different incidents to support the various statements that you've made?
I can give them.
So, for example, please, just hold on a sec. So, for example, when you come to two-point-three-point-one, you've got here an example of Woolworths. But it would be very useful, I think, if you went through this very useful document and gave us the example, plus, plus the lease, plus an explanation of the, of the circumstances of the particular case. So, you've spoken about this bakery. I don't know if this bakery was in Chatsworth Centre. But if it was in the Chatsworth Centre, or if it was another centre, it doesn't matter where it is, just that this is bakery, it used to bake bread, and suddenly, it prevented from baking bread, and once Shoprite Checkers started doing it, or whichever retailer. So, if you could, if you could do that, that would be enormous assistance. So, that we're not just dealing with one case. I want to get a sense that this is, because that's what you, that's your submission, that this is not a, just a set of circumstances that apply to Chatsworth Centre. It applies more broadly.
In addition to that, as you, as you give us that list, you give us the...
When do we have to get this to you?
No, you can take two months, whatever, whatever, yeah. But try and do it as soon as possible, because the information gathering stage of the inquiry will come to an end. So...
Just one thing, no, no, I don't want two months. I think we would, we would want it, Louise, we would want it certainly by mid-August.
Yes, yes, I think mid-August would be, would be good.
Just for the other, so we can get questions out to the other.
May I ask this? Like, we can't, we do not have, we know that Woolworths were not charged anything in Gateway to get in there, right? But we don't have that lease to show it to you. We request that you subpoena that.
Just, it's information that you have, okay?
Yeah, we just, we want information that you're, in position of your members. In fact, we're happy with the, with the lease, with copies of the lease of only your members. The other parties, the commission can directly deal with them. So, don't worry about the other leases. We want to see the kind of leases that you've had historically, from the time you occupied the malls, where you encounter these problems. And then, I wanted to also say, in addition to what Prof said earlier, that when you, when you give us the list of the centres, whether you call them centres or malls, you tell us where the centre is, and also, which anchor tenant occupies that mall, so that when we deal with the information, we understand exactly who the operators, who the grocery retailers are in each centre that you are providing to us in that list. Thank you.
A few additional questions for clarity, or perhaps for information and sources for some of the statistics that you've provided to us. The first is, initially, in the, at the start of your submission, you provided us with square meterage of how, of the development or the trends in the square meterage of shopping centres in South Africa over time. Please, can you provide us with the source of that? And also, perhaps, so it might be the source document, as well as your calculations in arriving at the particular number that's included in your submission? That's the first thing. The second thing is, you provided us with market shares of the property developers, the major property developers in South Africa, and you indicated that it's between, combined, it's between eighty percent and ninety percent of the market. Please, can you provide us firstly, the source of that? The basis on which that was calculated, whether it's turnover, or whatever the case may be? And then, also, the actual underlying calculation? So, it's firstly, source documentation, the basis on which it was calculated, and the underlying, your underlying calculations in arriving at the particular number in your submission?
Louise, can I add to that? If you don't have proper documents forming basis, as Louise is asking, you can also give us the assumptions that you based your estimation. If it's estimations that you're giving us, they are fine. But give us at least the assumptions that you based your conclusions on.
Correct. Then, thirdly, you spoke about cross-shareholding. In other words, supermarkets having shareholding in property developers, and cross-shareholding generally, as well as managing agents as well. Again, the source documentation of that, the actual underlying calculations in arriving at the number, and again, any assumptions that you made in arriving at a particular number. Then, yeah, the only other question I have is with regards to finding alternative store locations. I think Ms. Muntanga did ask the question, and you indicated that you tried to purchase land to set up shop as an alternative location. Have you tried to look for alternative locations to rent in other shopping malls or centres? And if so, what was the result of that?
Okay, but just this. Since the SMEs are from the communities in which they trade, and they were lured into these centres, right? And then, they've paid leases for twenty to twenty-five years, right? They should be given an opportunity to own in those malls. I mean, why must we now move out, the SMEs move out of our areas, townships, peri-urban, et cetera, et cetera, right? And be kicked out by JSE companies? Right? Why must we go and look for prime land outside of our territories? They've come in, they've crept in to our areas, right? And they come with vast amounts of money. So...
Thank you. I think your concern is noted. We take note of that. Again, can I just ask if you have looked for alternative areas in which to open the shop? If you have not, then you can simply state that as well. Thank you.
In fact, put differently, you can also indicate whether, within your own community, there is, there are such alternatives that you could consider? For example, if you could not, if you wanted to leave the centre where you are unhappy, indicate to us whether or not there are such alternatives? That's the point that we want to understand. And, no, 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 and then you listed, and you list these alternatives. We want you to set them out in the documents that you'll be providing, that, for example, our members, I'll make an example of Chatsworth. Chatsworth, you say in Chatsworth, when this happened in Chatsworth Centre, we've considered A, B, C, D, E, F alternatives within Chatsworth, and these were the outcomes. And for these reasons, you either close shop, or you put up with what is being, with the bully, what you called bullying by the landlord. That's what we want to understand. So, the alternatives, or the lack of alternatives, that's what we want in each area where you have members. And then, just a closing point that I forgot to mention. You also said that all these problems that have led to small players or small retailers closing down have led to unprecedented unemployment in the, in these areas. I want to ask you to speak to that here now. Can you also just give us figures that you have of people who've lost employment as a result of all the problems that you've encountered, emanating from the difficulties that you've had in your, with, in operating your businesses in centres and malls by your members? Thank you.
I don't need you to respond to it now. It's a request that you prepare a document as you've done here. And bear in mind that we were fact, we're fact-based, we're evidence-based. We're trying to, we must have evidence in order to be able to put these issues to, let's say, the developers or the retail...
to, let's say, the developers or the retailers. And we must be certain ourselves that there's substance to your statements. And that's why this evidence is really important. And if you took the line of questioning, question is, are there alternatives in Chatsworth? And the important point is if there aren't, that's a very important fact to have in mind when one's determining the circumstances in which the, you know, that you've experienced. So it really is important and I think for you to prepare the documentation and to submit it to the technical team. And with that, I really want to thank you very much for your presentation because it was very, very informative. With that, we are... Thank you. Sorry. I'm closing. No, 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 we're not going to talk about them. The public session is now closed and we adjourn tomorrow morning at nine. So we're completing proceedings. We are going to have a closed session in five minutes. So again, the only people permitted to stay are the members of the technical team and ourselves. And I don't think that we will need translation or interpretation, sorry.